I'd like to call the September 4th Oak Ridge Town Council meeting to order. The first order of business is invocation. We have the distinct pleasure of having several members of the Howerton family here, and we also have Anthony Howerton to give the invocation. So please stand as you're able.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight in your presence, grateful for the opportunity to serve this community and beyond. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us and all our families. Please grant our mayor, town council, staff, and citizens your wisdom, clarity, guidance to handle and address the matters before us. Help us to approach these matters in discussions with open minds and compassionate hearts, honoring every citizen's perspective. Inspire us to work together with integrity, justice, and deep commitment to the common good. May our decisions reflect your highest principles, fostering peace and prosperity for all. Also, help us to remember all the men and women that have gone on before us that played a big part in molding and making this community and town into what it is today. May we continue to build upon their legacies and to fill their shoes so that we can continue to pass these legacies on to our future generations. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We also approval of the minutes of the August 7th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2025 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have resolution proclamation announcements. This is a proclamation honoring the life of Roger D. Howerton. Whereas Roger D. Howerton was born April 3rd, 1932, the son of Luther and Vera Howerton, and whereas he was a graduate of Oak Ridge Public School, Summerfield High School, and the Oak Ridge Military Academy, and whereas he served in the United States Army during the Korean War conflict, and whereas he was a valued and active charter member of Central Baptist Church, a local school board member of Oak Ridge Elementary, and school advisory board member of Northwest High School, and a judge for the Guilford County Board of Elections, and whereas he was involved in the efforts to incorporate Oak Ridge, served on the interim town council, was elected in the town's first election in 1999, and served a total of five terms, and whereas, when he chose not to seek reelection in 2013, the town requested that the office of the governor of North Carolina bestow upon him the Order of the Long-Leaf Pine, the state's highest civilian honor given for exemplary service. And whereas during his long and accomplished life, Roger D. Howerton was a friend, mentor, and leader who exhibited character, strength, humility, and grace to those around him. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, with all the members of town council, do hereby offer our sincere condolences to the family of Roger D. Howerton upon his passing and express appreciation for his years of service to his town, community, and fellow man. In witness wherefore, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Oak Ridge to be affixed this fourth day of September 2025. Would any member of council like to offer any comments?
Yes, I'd love to. I didn't know Roger as long as some of you did, but every time I saw him, he was so generous with the history of this town, and for instance, also things like the history of his service to our country. He was such a kind and generous and intelligent and thoughtful man. I'm just so blessed to come after him in service to our community and so proud of the efforts that he and others, including Gary Blackburn, who's here tonight, made to incorporate our town 27 years ago now. That contribution is lasting, and so I'm so grateful for it, as I know everyone in Oak Ridge is. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I knew Roger most of my life. What a great man. We served and worshiped together at Central Baptist Church. About the best that I can say is that I wasn't worthy to tie Roger's shoes. I feel honored to be able to stand on his shoulders and continue on what he built in this town. I thank the family for sharing Roger with us.
Yeah, I also had the privilege of serving with Roger on council. The one thing I always admired about him was he was always thinking about what he was going to vote. So up until the last minute, when he was ready to vote, he was processing more information. And I think once or twice, he walked in this room, or the firehouse, thinking he was going to vote one way, and he ended up voting a different way because he got more information. So that's one of the things I really admired about the man, was he was always listening to other people and thinking about more information, and he was always willing to think about things differently based upon the new information he learned. So I really appreciate him. And again, as others have said, the family, I want to thank the family for the fact that you lent him to us for so long, and we really appreciate that. With that, I'd like to, if you'd like to come up, I'd like to present you with the proclamation, and if you'd like some pictures, otherwise I'll just hand it to you. Would you like to come up?
Did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
No, no. I'm a man of many words.
All right. I don't believe we have anyone from the sheriff's department, but the crime statistics are on the back table, if you'd like to take a look at that. One of the things that did stick out is they are seeing a little bit more checks being taken out of mailboxes. So they encourage you to maybe not send, put a check in the mailbox, maybe take it to the post office, or, you know, use online services. That was one of the things they're pointing out, that people are stealing checks out of their mailboxes. The next item is from the Oak Ridge Fire Department. Do we have someone from the fire department?
Good evening. My name is Mark Liberty, obviously with the Oak Ridge Fire Department. It's my first time, so just bear with me. Let's see. So calls for the month of December, we had 81 calls. Three, excuse me, were structure fires. We had 35 emergency medical responses, one hazardous response, two hazardous material responses, two brush fires, one vehicle fire, 14 false alarm responses, and we had 23 other responses, which included things like smoke scares, lockouts, animal rescues, et cetera. And then also with the fire season coming, just some September fire safety message, just make sure you're checking smoke alarms. Just check, test all alarms in your home, replace batteries if needed, know your escape plan, make sure everyone in the household is aware of that. Heating safety, just space heaters and fireplaces with the weather starting to cool down, cooking safety, and change of season checkup. And that is all I have for you guys today.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thanks, as always. All right. Next, we have two public hearings. The first one is an amendment to Section 3863B of the Code of Ordinances Regarding the Distances for Required Water and Sewer Connections. Are you going to present that, Mr. Bruce?
Since Mr. Taylor could not join us this evening, I'll present the two text amendments. The first to Section 30-863B of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Distances for Required Water and Sewer Connections. This text amendment establishes under what circumstances a new subdivision will be required to connect to the municipal water system. It's based on a sliding scale that's based on the size of the development. So the larger the proposed subdivision, the further we would ask the municipal water to be extended to it. The text is identical to the ordinance that Stokesdale adopted many years ago for their system, which has served them well, and also offers predictability for developers that would be working in both jurisdictions. The Oak Ridge Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this text amendment and held a public hearing at their last meeting and unanimously recommend approval to town council.
Okay, this is a public hearing, which means there'll be 20 minutes for people that wish to speak in favor, 20 minutes for people that wish in opposition, and if there is input from both sides, then there'll be five minutes period of rebuttal. So all we ask you to do is come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and the floor will be yours. Again, 20 minutes for people in favor. Okay, so ready, Sandra? All those who wish to speak in favor of this, please step forward, state your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Spencer Sullivan, 79, 17, Quiet Place, Oak Ridge. I'm coming to you this evening to speak on behalf of the Water Advisory Committee, as well as myself personally. This text amendment comes as a unanimous recommendation from the Water Advisory Committee. The goals of the committee, both short and long term, include developing, growing the municipal water system in terms of both infrastructure and customers as effectively and cost efficiently as possible. This text amendment requires new developments near existing municipal water mains to connect to the water system with the cost of extending the lines and piping to the homes borne by the developer. This helps us realize both goals, because the infrastructure is extended and the town will add to its customer base. It's no secret that it's difficult to find potable water in Oak Ridge field wells. There's a cost associated with providing water to new homes. Our research shows that, well, the costs associated with this text amendment are comparable to the cost of drilling individual wells for each home or providing a community well system. The advantage to developers is the municipal connection takes away the uncertainty of finding a suitable water source from an individual or community well. Both developers and builders much prefer a municipal water connection when it's available because of that. In our meeting with developers two months ago, we discussed this amendment, and they said they were fine with its provisions. As Mr. Bruce pointed out, this ordinance has been in place in Stokesdale for several years, and both builders and developers are accustomed to working with its provisions, and they love it. So this, our committee strongly recommends council to adopt this text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this amendment? Seeing none, we can close the period for people who wish to speak in favor. Now we have 20 minutes for people that wish to speak in opposition to this amendment. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we can close the period for public comment and open it up to council either for discussion or for a motion to approve the amendment, or deny, either one. Which is your, what is your pleasure?
I move that we approve this text amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Schneider, you made the motion. The floor is yours to begin with.
Mr. Sullivan made great points as former mayor, former council member, and current chair of the Water Advisory Committee. He's very knowledgeable, and I've watched this amendment being discussed at the Water Committee. I also had a long discussion about water with Mayor Protem of Stokesdale on Saturday, and this happened to come up, and he said it was one of the best things they did. Now, it doesn't take effect until the water line is built, but he said once the water line in Stokesdale was built, having this in their ordinances helped them enormously in terms of growing the water system sort of on its own. So I'm strongly in favor of it. Thank you.
Mr. Stone, anything?
Yeah, just piggybacking on the comment, this doesn't go into effect till we actually have water lines and such. So developments that go in now, obviously are either going to have private wells or community wells, and not going to be forced to convert over to the town's water system, but it will be available for them in the future or as soon as it's available. So I don't see anything, I don't see a downside to it. I think that is the right approach going forward. The fact that the Water Advisor Committee and the Planning and Zoning Board both trusted peoples, and they voted unanimously for it, so I think it's a good deal for us.
Mr. Greason?
I'm along with everybody else. I'm going to approve it, and I don't think I need to say anything else.
I just want to reinforce that they're either going to have to drill wells already, or they're going to have to put a community well in. So in lieu of doing that, they just need to run the pipes to connect to municipal water. So it should be relatively awash cost-wise for developers, because they're either drilling wells, as Mr. Spencer, Mr. Sullivan pointed out, there's always a risk that the well won't work. So this takes away a lot of risks, so it's a good idea. So with that, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Will you be introducing the next item?
The second public hearing, I know that there are four sections shown on the agenda. I would advise council to take them as one amendment and to have one motion to approve, or one motion to take action. The amendment is related to creating a new permitted use in the Code of Ordinances for an event center. The event center as a use would be allowed by right in the general office, medium intensity district, the general business district, shopping center district, and the public and institutional district. It will also be allowed with a special use permit, which is a quasi judicial procedure in the agricultural and the RS40 residential districts. There are extra requirements for a special use request in the RS40 residential district, and that would include primarily having access along a major thoroughfare, and also a minimum lot size of three acres. The amendment also includes standards for parking for event centers. It includes a definition, and then it includes an additional number of development standards related to buffers, noise, and other standards to reduce the impact on neighboring properties. This has been discussed at the Planning and Zoning Board several times, and has been actually in front of council. This current version was heard by the Oak Ridge Planning and Zoning Board at their last meeting, in which they voted unanimously to recommend approval to town council.
Okay. Again, this is a public hearing, which means there's be 20 minutes for people to speak in favor, 20 minutes to speak in opposition. Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this amendment? State your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Bill Greco with Land Solutions, PO Box 347, Oak Ridge, speaking in favor of this group of amendments this evening. I'd like to point out a couple of things. One, I've had multiple landowners approach me about an event space, which is what led to our proposing this text amendment, which was the easy part. Sean's not here this evening, but I know he had to work hard on this. I know the planning board worked hard on this. I know a number of you folks worked hard on this outside of these public hearings. I think we've landed with a good end result here in allowing event center as a use, along with all the other associated rules and stipulations and regulations and so forth and so on. So again, thanks to everyone for this one. This was a tough one, and the town did a lot of the heavy lifting on this versus me. If there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Seeing no one, we'll now open a 20-minute period for people who wish to speak in opposition. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this amendment? Hearing done, we'll close the public comment section and turn it over to council either for a motion or discussion. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the event center text amendments as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stone, you made the motion. Your floor is yours.
There has been a lot of talk. This thing has been kicked around for a while now, and a lot of people involved in it, planning and zoning, and Sean did a lot of work on this. The one big thing that, that people that I spoke with, the biggest deal was wait a minute, you know, if my next door neighbor wants to put an event center in RS40, it's allowed to do that. And with the number of restrictions and the way that this is laid out, it does protect the individual property owner. I think one of the biggest things, and I think, most people took a deep breath after they heard it, unless you have three acres of land, you're not going to have an event center there. You're going to have to do a lot to get a special use permit. So it does protect those individual homeowners for privacy and peace of mind and peace and quiet. So I like the way that this was developed. It maybe took a little bit longer than some people had expected or had desired, but we take our time on stuff and get it right. So...
Mr. Greason?
No comments.
Ms. Schneider?
Yeah, I think this is, this now has a lot of protections in it. And just to be clear for everyone here, this, being able to have an event center would be allowed, as they say, by right, so automatically, for several, you know, like business districts, including public and institutional, which I think of the military academy immediately with that. So I think that's a good thing. And the concern was with allowing it in residential and agricultural. I think there are now enough protections that you can't even apply unless you meet, you have sufficient land, you have sufficient area for parking, as defined in this, these amendments, buffers, what else? And road frontages on a major thoroughfare. So you can't have this back in a cul-de-sac in a neighborhood. So those are a lot of protections, but the ultimate protection is, this is what's called a special use permit. So you don't get it automatically. You can meet all of these requirements, but it has to be granted by the town council. So that offers the final protection where, you know, if you're one of the neighbors who has a good reason to object, you can come speak at a quasi judicial hearing on the matter. It would be quasi judicial, right? So council would have to make its decision based on facts, that's and evidence, that's the requirement of quasi judicial. But they do get to make a decision, and it is not automatic. So each individual application would be considered very carefully, and I think that's a very important, if not the most important, protection.
Hold on. There's not much to add. My main reason for being okay with this is, as Ms. Schneider pointed out, that the special use permit is something that you would have to come to council for. You would have to make your case about why you want this. And if I'm correct, we would be able to put restrictions in. It's not like we would be able to offer restrictions. We would not, we would not just have to wait for them to offer them. We could actually say, this is, this is a restriction that council wants to add. So we have a lot of latitude, so it's a high, fairly high bar that you'd have to jump over to do it in the RS40 and agricultural districts. So that's why I'm okay with this. If there's no further comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have the first section of public comments. Typically, what we do is we like to call up any community organizations first, and three minutes, state your name and address, and you can talk about anything you like for three minutes.
Good evening, all. My name is Angie Williams. I'm here on behalf of Oak Ridge Military Academy, 2317. I'm here on behalf of Oak Ridge Military Academy, 2317 Oak Ridge Road. Is that better? Okay. I'm not used to a microphone. I just yell at the academy. What I was coming to let you guys know or remind you was that on Saturday in Bonner Field House, which is where the football field is at the academy, Congresswoman Virginia Fox will be coming for the Service Academy to speak. Representatives from every branch of the Service Academy, with the exception of the Merchant Marines, will be present simply because we didn't have anybody that was confirmed for that. But that begins at nine on Saturday. You're welcome to call the academy if you need further information. I'm always available to help where I can. The other piece that I wanted to remind you guys of is that we are having homecoming on September 20th. So this is our 2025 Bridge to the Ridge event. The academy has often stood as a monument or kind of separate from the community as a whole for some time. And this is our way of inviting the community onto campus where you can actually see our cadets up close. You can see our buildings and the things that we are doing and improving as things go. Our campus makes up the Oak Ridge Military Historic District, as you well know, and most of our buildings are old. I mean, the building that I work in was built in 1914. So there is constantly upkeep and upgrades that we have and we are making in order to stay current with the times, not only for our academics, but also for our, our facilities and grounds. So again, that's September 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We'll have a car and bike show. We'll have the cadet parade. We'll have a vendor fair, picnic lunch, and some games and things like that for the, for the core and the community to do. One of the things that we are doing this year is a airsoft competition, like target practice, for our alum, our kids, our community. Feel free to come. At 5:30 that evening, we are meeting in Carnersville at a social, a social hour, I believe is what it's called, for an after-party, for off-campus kind of way to kind of socialize in a, in a softer way, so to speak. But yeah, so I just wanted to invite you guys. Feel free to come out. We are still looking for vendors, sponsors, and I'm always, always interested in donations. So feel free to hand it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll open up the comments from the public. Adrian, your hand went up first. Oh, I apologize. Oak Ridge Elementary, please. Thank you. You survived the first week?
We survived eight days. We're okay. Good evening. I'm Chris Chandra, principal at Oak Ridge Elementary, and here with Melissa Wilson, our assistant principal. Just wanted to share some quick updates. Our state test scores have been released, so I'm proud to say that we are showing over 86% proficient. And EVA's growth just came out, and Oak Ridge Elementary exceeded the growth status, which means that our students are making more than one year's growth. And we are one of the few schools that have exceeded two years in a row or more. So we're extremely proud of that accomplishment here at Oak Ridge. The second thing I wanted to share was our car rider line. We are doing well with our car rider line. Couldn't be more happier with it. We are reminding parents each and every day to, you know, be mindful of, you know, in the neighborhood, not blocking driveways or intersections, and so we've been doing really well with that.
And as Principal Chandra just shared, we are beyond thrilled and so proud of our students, our staff, and our partnership with this community, with the success that our school has shown over the last school year. One thing we would like to do is to invite you to come help us kick off our Read-A-Thon, which will serve, where you would serve as a mystery guest reader in our classrooms. So all you need to do is show up when your schedule allows, and we will greet you at the front office, provide you with a selection of books, and we will escort you down to a classroom to be a mystery guest reader to our students. It is on Monday, September the 15th, and I have some little invitations with contact information if you are interested, and I can approach you to, to pass those out.
Yes, please.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
We would love to have you there. Thank you so much for your partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sandra, any other community organizations I may have missed? All right. Now, Adrian, you had your hand up first.
Adrian Eckenrod, 5679 Timber Trace Way, Oak Ridge. Good evening. My name is Adrian Eckenrod, and my family and I are proud to call Oak Ridge home. I'm a husband, a father, and like many residents, I chose this town be, I chose this town because of its small-town spirit, its parks and trails, and the way neighbors look out for each other. I'm running for Town Council because I believe we can protect what makes Oak Ridge special while also preparing for the challenges and opportunities ahead. In my professional life, I serve as chief technology officer for a national investigations firm. I also work with companies that develop and train public safety agencies on advanced drone technology, tools that can make emergency response faster, safer, and more effective. Just last Friday, I had the privilege of supporting a multi-agency training event right here in our area, which include our own Oak Ridge Fire Department. We brought together first responders from different departments, gave them hands-on experience with cutting-edge drone systems, and showed them how these tools can provide instant eyes in the sky during emergencies, whether it's a missing person search, a fire, or a law enforcement situation. That's the kind of practical, forward-looking work I want to bring to Town Council. I believe in combining innovation with common sense, making sure we're prepared for the future while staying true to our roots. My background has taught me how to manage complex operations in multimillion-dollar budgets, how to work across agencies and build consensus, and how to deliver results without losing sight of the people we serve. But more than that, I understand that leadership in a town like ours isn't just about policies and projects. It's about listening. It's about transparency, and it's about making decisions that reflect the values of the people who live here. Oak Ridge is more than a place on a map. It's a community we're all building together. And if I have the privilege to serve on Town Council, I will work every day to keep it safe, strong, and the kind of place that we are proud to pass on to the next generation. If you'd like to learn more about me, my background, and my vision of Oak Ridge, please visit adrianforoakridge.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Clark, I think I saw your hands next.
Hello, Lindsey Clark. Address is 6816 Koala Drive in Oak Ridge. Good evening, members of the council and fellow residents of Oak Ridge. My name is Lindsey Clark, and I'm running for Town Council this November to bring a fresh perspective and positive changes to the way the council has made decisions in the past. With my engineering degree and experience as an engineer and project manager, I've built expertise in problem-solving, collaboration, leadership, and efficient resource management. While living in Oak Ridge these past eight years and serving my community in our schools and on my HOA board, I've identified three areas of improvement that are the focus of my campaign and highlight how I would serve if elected. Fiscal responsibility, transparency, and respect for private property. I would curb the, what I consider, and many others, reckless spending, promote transparency in all areas of town operations to build trust, and prioritize responsiveness to residents' concerns and priorities over special interests. I'd like to clarify that I'm not running for a council position to seek a political career. I'm running to give the voters an alternative. You could consider me a political outsider that's in touch with the community and wants to serve the community's interests, not my own. On that note, I invite all voters to feel welcome to reach out to me with any questions, ideas, or just to have a chat. I appreciate your support. And on a final separate note, I just wanted to comment on the Heritage Farm Park plans that are proposed this evening. So based on my research that I've done into the topic, five years ago when the Heritage Farm Park survey was done, the results indicated that the top-desired amenity that was not already present in Oak Ridge was a splash pad. It ranked it for all additions noted in today's proposed plan. Notably, pickleball was not an option at that time. On this most recent survey, a splash pad was the top write-in option in additional comments since there's not even listed as an amenity option to choose. So just a note, I'd like the Town Council to consider why it is still absent from any proposed plans when determining whether or not to move forward with the proposed design as it's shown tonight. The space is there, just with some slight modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Aye?
I got you. Next.
To the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and remaining council body, good evening. To the Oak Ridge town citizens, good evening. Thank you guys so much for yielding time to allow me to speak and announce my candidacy for Town Council of Oak Ridge as well. I've been married to my wonderful wife, Janelle Adams Lindsey. Yeah, my apologies. 8874 Craven Wood Drive, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. So I've been married to my wonderful wife, Janelle Lindsey, for 24 years. We have two wonderful children, Aaron and Jocelyn Lindsey. Aaron, 23, Jocelyn, 19. Most of my life has been spent growing up in the Northwest community. I tend to go for technical community college and transferred from there to North Carolina A&amp;T, specializing in, obviously, agriculture. I'm dedicated to committed service in my community. I've been consistently involved in youth sports for over 30 years. I proudly serve as a member of Oak Ridge Recs. I serve on the board for the, for the Parks and Rec. As a business owner for more than 24 years, I have outstanding employees. And if they were here tonight, they'd probably be impressed that I said I have outstanding employees. But they are great people. Integrity has been my greatest lesson and a hallmark because not only has it shaped my character, but it's also helped me build my future. So I have also identified areas of concern that I would address if I'm elected to Town Council. And by the way, citizens, you probably don't know a lot about me now, but you will. I will continue to push my agenda and fight for your vote. Taxes, Oak Ridge Youth Association, and the town park. As far as taxes, I will work diligently to control reckless spending, maintain current tax revenue, and I will oppose raising taxes on citizens of Oak Ridge. Again, I own a small business, so I understand what it takes to manage households, what it, what it means to be able to provide. So I do know that raising taxes on individuals could put them in a bind, and that bind could be financially, which could lead to other issues in households as well. Oak Ridge Youth Association, the greatest value-added service the town receives in the world-class, is a world-class youth program that's entirely managed by Oak Ridge Youth Association. I will work directly with Oak Ridge Youth Association to approve and enhance our working relationship. ORYA's support for the town and families they serve has earned our respect, and we appreciate them as a trusted partner. Therefore, we must do more to show our appreciation for Oak Ridge Youth Association. The town parks, we have beautiful parks here. I'll support the development of our town parks to be more inclusive and supportive of all families in Oak Ridge. I will ensure the development of our town parks reflect priorities of taxpayers and delivers on the community's expectations by incorporating inclusive features that serve citizens of all ages. Thank you so much.
There you go. I think I saw another hand in the back. Your perfect timing.
Michael Logan, 5202 Rambling Road. Thank y'all for what y'all do. I understand what you were doing sitting in those seats. And as a former board member, I've said I've always going to work with the schools and always provide information for the public about our schools. As a shout-out, Oak Ridge Elementary, they are rated an A last year, and they are still rated an A this year, so it is one of the top schools. A little bit on that performance, U.S. News has them ranked 14th in the state. So they are one of the top school, elementary schools in the state. They're number two in the county. They're number two because they're not a specialty school. So they are just a open, public school where the students within the attendance zone attend that school. They're not a magnet school, so for them to be second, that is great. Louisville Northwest Middle, they were a B, and they're still listed as a B, which is good. A B is good. Their achievement did go up one point in the state. They are ranked 67th by U.S. News, and they are number two in the county also. Northwest High previously was rated an A and is still rated an A, so they are doing well. I will say their performance did drop down five points, but it's still high enough where the school is still rated an A. Now, a little note to that, I'd like to give a shout-out to the Early College at Guilford. And everybody knows Northwest area is my main focus. Now, Guilford College may not be within the Northwest area, but it is the number-one school in the state and the 31st-ranked school in the nation. And why is it important to Northwest? Because 57 students from the Northwest area attend a school that is made up of 195 students. So they are the largest group of students within an attendance zone attending that school. Where would Northwest scores be if those students were within Northwest? Now, I always like to focus on charter schools and public schools equally. Now, with our charter schools, there's a lot of talk about them. Charter schools in Guilford County, the lowest charter school is above 42 of the public schools within Guilford County in the rankings. Now, I will say, the five highest schools are within Guilford County schools that outperform the charter schools. So always take that in mind when you're looking at schools for the public. That's all I have, and thank y'all for what y'all are doing.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? John?
Good evening, council. I'm John Browning, 8024 Linville Road, Oak Ridge. I'm not running for office, but I would like, it just seems just fitting to say a few more words about Roger Howerton between he and Gary Blackburn set the tone. And like Councilman Stone said, you're all on the shoulders of the guys that laid the foundation for what Oak Ridge is today. The more things changed, the more they remained the same. Those early council members had some, had some real tough issues to navigate. Again, the land that the present town park's on was not free. It was purchased from the Linville family, and at the time, a lot of council members said, "That's too much money. We'll never afford that. We don't need that." But it's through Gary Blackburn and Roger and people like that, you saw the investment that made in the community. And I really can't imagine Oak Ridge without the town park and now the Heritage Farm Park. So, and Roger's always impressed me. We were on the fire department board together and spent a lot of time together on different boards. He's the most humble and kind, and again, his service is well documented. But he set the tone at meetings for me, and again, he could respectfully disagree with somebody without getting personal, and I just had always appreciated his tone of respect. Even if he disagreed with you, he could do so respectfully and move on to the next topic. So anyway, I just felt like I needed to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll close that section for public comment and move to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several items for you this evening. The first are three appointments or reappointments. The first is to reappoint Patty Pazluru to the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustment.
If, if council pleasure, we can consider all three at once.
Fine.
I agree. Yes.
Also, Phyllis Anders reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and Todd Hall's reappointment to the Water Advisory Committee.
Is there make, is there a motion to approve these reappointments?
I move that we approve all three reappointments as described by the town manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The second item, I'm going to ask Assistant Town Manager to present for us.
Thank you, council. This is a request to consider electronic advertising on the county website. In 2017, the state legislature, legislature passed a local law, which was SL 2017210, to create a pilot program in which municipalities in Guilford County only could place advertising on the county website instead of in a newspaper of general circulation, which is required in the general statutes. If you were around back then... If you were around back then, this was known as the Trudy Wade Law. Repre-- excuse me.
Time's up.
That's all the time you had. Sorry.
You're finished.
Ms. Wade was a representative on the county commission and went on to be a representative in the State House, and she was not happy, I understand, with some of the coverage she got from the news and record. And so, as a result, she asked that some of the legal advertising be taken away from them. And this is how that came about. This was in 2017, and it has been slow to catch on, although the county has been doing this ever since then, I believe. Budgeting for legal ads is kind of difficult for staff because it's impossible to know in advance how many ads we're going to have to place and how complex they are. Sometimes they're extremely long. Sometimes they have to be run multiple times. I did some research, and since July 1, 2024, every ad that we've run in the news and record costs an average of $580, and some of them have been well over $1,000. And due to these factors, staff would like to recommend that you guys would place legal advertising on the county website at a cost of $10 per ad, as allowed by this local law. And there I included in the packet a few PowerPoint pages provided with Guilford County. In order to do this, first, we would, staff would need to get your okay to move ahead with this. We would need to schedule a public hearing, which would be heard before planning and zoning as well as the town council, because this does require a change to our development ordinance. And then you would be asked to approve an e-notice publication agreement with Guilford County.
All right, so you're basically, tonight, all we're saying is that we want to go forward with a public hearing?
Yes, that's correct.
To consider this. So, we wouldn't be approving it tonight. We'd just be saying, hey, we're going to move forward it. So, Council, questions? Motion?
I move--
Go ahead, Ann.
I move that we approve or recommend approval to move forward, consideration to move forward, I guess, of electronic advertising on Guilford County website as described in Ms. Smith's memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Actually, Councilwoman Schneider, I don't think a motion's required. I think just consensus from the--
Okay.
--instruct staff to come back so that we don't have a confusion of approvals in the record, because you will be asked to both amend the ordinances, as Assistant Town Manager just said, and then, after you do that presumably, then asked for a motion.
Okay, so--
So, I should just say, this is a good idea.
Exactly. But I wanted to comment, Mayor, if I could briefly--
Yes.
--follow up. I won't add exactly to the summary that Ms. Smith provided, but except to say it's accurate. Why didn't we adopt this sooner? We looked at this sooner. The reason's largely because of me. The bill was passed in late 2017. It was effective January 2018. The county put it on its books pretty much promptly. The bill purported to be a statewide bill limited to a pilot program in Guilford. It's still a pilot program in Guilford. It's never been expanded, but it was written as a statewide bill. The county takes the position, this day, it's a local law. I disagree with that, but I've had it back and forth with them twice now. About three years ago or so, when we first looked at it, I think it was three years ago, and they had not amended the state statutes as the bill said to amend. It was like four or five parts of the statutes. And I had concerns for the towns, which I represent both Pleasant Garden and as well as Oak Ridge. But this came up with Oak Ridge initially. So, I advised staff that we should be conservative about it, and hopefully, they'd get the statutes properly dealt with. And then, if I ever had to go into court to defend what is crucially important, that we always have proper legal advertising for what we do, that it was, you could point to the statutes. They still haven't done that. So, I went back and forth with the county again earlier this year. I am now satisfied that despite the way they have handled this or not handled it at the statutory level, or codification level, I should say, that with seven years' experience in Guilford County, no challenges to any legal advertising that I'm aware of or that the county reported, and with the county offering to do this still at considerably lower expense to the town, I mean considerably lower. I mean, it's only gotten worse with the newspapers since this first went on, that there is no good reason not to do it. The bill actually has two parts to it, and we're doing the second part here. That's the recommendation to the council, which is to enter into an agreement, a contract with the county to use their website for the town's legal advertising. The first part of the bill allowed for advertising on the town's website, but you had to spend a year running costly ads telling the public how to access that, which doesn't avoid the expense to them. And we have a good relationship with the county, otherwise, for other kinds of contracts. There's no reason not to do it, as Ms. Smith just outlined. So, that's a greater background. So, why didn't we do this? That's largely on me, but I feel comfortable that we're not in a situation where we're going to be successfully challenged. And if we ever were, the county would be in there with us defending it. So, I do commend this effort and recommend it as well.
All right, so basically, is there consensus that we move forward with this?
I would like to, yes.
Mr. Greason, Schneider.
Yeah, it's about time. Thank you, though.
So, that's sufficient? Then you have a consensus to move forward. Any other manager of business?
Just one other update for Council to report that construction of the second phase of the Veterans Honor Green is now complete and pending a final inspection from the county. Next week, we'll be removing caution tape and opening up the boardwalk to the public. And I'd just like to say that Parker Construction has done a fantastic job with the design provided by Revington Reeves Landscape Architecture. We did exceed the contingency by less than $2,000, which will be paid out of funds that were raised by the Special Events Committee and not through the town's general fund. And I will note that that extra cost was mostly due to some additional landscaping and a tree removal that we requested the contractor do for us while they were on the site. So, I wanted to report that and also to let Council know that we'll be removing the tape, and the public will be able to enjoy that new amenity.
Excellent.
One additional item, I think we forgot to mention that Jim Harton isn't here tonight, obviously, but he's not been well this week, and so a shout out to him. He's probably watching on the live stream right now, but we miss him.
Excellent. And the well at the farmhouse is working still?
Yes.
Okay, good. They only had to replace the control box.
That's right.
So, okay. Next is consideration approval of the revised water fee. Is that something you'd like to introduce, Mr. Bruce?
Yes, thank you. You have attached to the memo a proposal to update Appendix A of the Town of Oak Ridge Water System Rules and Regulations, which is the water fees and charges schedule. This is probably the third or so time that you've been asked to amend the schedule as we learn more about the fees and charges that we need to establish as the water system comes online. The following changes are recommended by the Water Advisory Committee. The first is to expand the base charge per month fee schedule to include larger meter sizes. We initially had only up to two-inch meter sizes, anticipating that we would only have residential connections. Larger meter installations will be necessary when or if we connect to higher-capacity commercial users. This proposed schedule is modeled after the Winston-Salem and Forsyth Fee and has been reviewed and also endorsed by EnviroLink. It also establishes a wholesale rate that is 10% less than the retail rate. And thirdly, amends the schedule to include commercial uses and to clarify that the same rates will apply to customers in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. And as mentioned, the Water Advisory Committee reviewed and recommended approval of these proposed changes at their August 13 meeting.
Is there any discussion or a motion?
I move that we approve the updated water fees and charges schedule as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Schneider, you made the motion.
I think this is just another way that we're looking ahead. We have the possibility of including the shopping center area in our water system as it grows, and we're looking ahead and making those changes now, because the primary goal is to serve residents and to build our customer base. Thanks.
Mr. Greason.
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
Yeah, as the town manager pointed out, we've already made a couple of changes in this, and this is just part of the process of getting to the point where we have water. So, it's a housekeeping matter.
Yeah, I have nothing further to add to that. So, with the motions being made, and second, is there, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consideration approval of addendum to the field usage policy with the Oak Ridge Youth Association. Let's see. This, I believe the main purpose of this is to, when we first established it, we missed out on dealing with camps and some other minor caution. One question is, several, and I apologize if I started talking first, but the insurance Do you have any background on why that was changed?
Yeah, this is what we ask all of our, when we ask for certificates of insurance, we typically, and the standard business insurance now for liability is $1 million per incident and $2 million in the aggregate. We just felt like we needed to clarify that in the policy. That's typically the coverage that we receive when we request it. And it's a standard policy.
In what other areas have we done this? I mean--
Any contractor working on town property, any situation where we need liability insurance from the contractor or to add us to that coverage, that's what we request.
Do we have any idea what the difference in premium might be between a, right now, the youth association has a $1 million policy, and we're asking to go to $2 million? And I don't know that we know what impact that actually has on them.
I might refer to Sam if you've got some comment on that.
The ones I've seen in my practice and also in businesses I've got, the $1 million to $2 million is negligible. It's pretty much a standard now with inflation. Sounds bad. $1 million is not what it used to be, but $2 million is what we're seeing often. The other thing is that I believe this is in the policy also for people renting or having a residence at their park or event on park property. That is the standard that is suggested and to a extent required by our insurer.
Okay. I apologize, I kind of opened it up for a free form, but please ask questions.
I've talked to Philip Southern, and they just signed a new 10-year contract with Guilford County, and it's $1 million required by Guilford County. Now, I don't know why we would be different. I guess more is better.
Mr. Stone, and we don't have to just on that thing, any questions in general?
Did anybody have conversations prior to putting the field uses policy and addendum together with the youth association? What's their position on this?
I believe, Mr. Greason, didn't you review--
No, I sent it to him a week ago Monday, so--
So, he's aware of it?
Yeah, maybe he just got it then, but they're already in their season.
Yeah.
They've already got down their registration. Maybe it doesn't cost much. I don't know what it costs. It's going to be--
And I just want to go on record, I'd be fine with going back to $1 million until we find out what impact it had on youth associations. So, maybe next year, we would put it up to $2. So, I'd be fine with rolling that back to $1 million for now, because we don't know what impact. We didn't ask what the impact would be. I mean, I have a feeling, to Sam's point, it probably is fairly trivial. It's not going to be thousands of dollars. It might be, you know, an incremental, but I'd be, since we didn't ask, I'd be okay with taking it back to $1 million for this year. Yes.
Guilford County is self-insured. They cover their employees, their liability, all of that. Guilford County is self-insured. We are insured for the property and this is valid.
Understand.
But Guilford County Schools is making them put up a $1 million insurance policy or a, to them, for liability. So, that would be different, wouldn't it?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Mr. Greason?
Or a is required to have a $1 million insurance policy.
Right.
With the county.
With the county. Doesn't come from the county.
Right.
They're on insurance company. So, we're talking two different things. You're saying they're self-insured. They're self-insured, I would assume, for their employees, right?
They're self-insured for losses of their property in excess of, for instance, if it was $2 million, Guilford County would be able to go $3 million.
But if it was $3 million-- Well, I think, if you really want to get to it, I think there is support for putting it back to $1 million, so I don't know if we need to continue discussing it. You know, I think we have support to put it back to $1 million, so that's fine. Other questions about the policy?
Yeah. I'd like for us to give some consideration to a couple others. One of them is, the very last one, youth association can be loaned to scoreboard remotes, and they have to be returned in the same condition. Damages will result in $500 per device fee. What kind of remotes do we have that cost $500?
That's the cost--
Can you tell me where you, oh, I see, I see.
It's the cost of the remotes. When we had to replace one last year, that was the cost.
These are specialized remotes that work with the scoreboard, so--
So, the actual, so the remote control for a scoreboard costs $500?
That's correct.
These are proprietary remote controls. They're not like the universal remotes that we have for TVs and things like that. This is a remote that goes with that scoreboard. It's unlikely that there are any kind of universal remotes for that scoreboard. So, if that's the case, it's $500, it's $500.
Yeah. If that's fact, I'll trust the town manager on that. The other one, and we've had this discussion in the past, but I'd like to raise it once again, that the way the new system is set up, and it's listed here in the addendum, is that the youth association is invoice monthly, and they submit their rosters, and then they write a check to us for the full amount, and then a week later or so, we send a check to them that's basically the rebate. It's just, there's too many hands in it. The more simple way to do this is just to allow the youth association to use their stipend or rebate, whatever you want to classify it, use that funding that was approved by Parks and Rec and by the town council as a credit against their monthly charges. And then, so if it's, and we've talked about in here about the estimates and everything, if we estimate that it's, you know, or if they submit $3,000 and they have that money in their credits, where the amount of money that we've already approved for them to spend, then no money needs to change hands. It's recognized that you have this amount of money to run the youth association or youth sports program for the Town of Oak Ridge, and we just move forward.
The reason I, I'm very adamant that we need to break up the two is, when we had the stipend, it got lost. The analogy I give you is almost everyone in this room has a cell phone, and almost everybody in this room probably got some kind of rebate or discount or something. And that rebate or discount was only visible on the very first month. You saw that on the first month, and then it's gone. I mean, I pay my bill every month, and I know there's a rebate in there, but I don't notice it. So, I think it's very important that the youth association always knows what they owe us from a field usage standpoint, and then we give them back a rebate. So, by doing it as two separate transactions, it never gets lost that they owe us $9,000 and that we're going to give them maybe $7,000 back, so that every month, it balances out. So, the fact that they do that, that's why I'm very much adamant that it has to be two separate, because in the past, now, the other thing is, I pushed this very hard, was the current administration for the youth association is doing a wonderful job, but what about the next administration? I want to always make sure that the youth association knows that they're paying for the fields and we're giving them a rebate. And the rebate is $70 per Oak Ridge resident, per sport, per season. So, we are doing something that no other town does. No other town does this kind of support. So, I think it's only reasonable that they pay for their fields, and then we give them a rebate as two separate transactions, so it's always very, very clear how much they're paying for the fields and what the town-- paying for the fields and what the town's giving them. Because if it's just a credit, it gets lost. That's why I'm so adamant that they need to have it as two separate transactions. So.
I'm just curious, what should the turnaround time be?
About a week. If it's two weeks, I mean, you know, like I said, if they can't, that shouldn't cause.
I'm just curious.
I'm saying, what?
What's the turnaround, Bill?
They make their payment, it clears in one or two days.
I'm just saying, they pay it on time. What would be, expect to return their?
Maybe a couple of weeks. I mean, depending on the day that their payment comes in and then the day that we request, Sam, you know, they only run checks once a week. So, you know, it could be a week, it could be a couple of weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
All right. But typically it'd be about a week, probably.
Probably.
So again, it's, like I said, I, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Greason.
Well, I know when Jim was talking about this, we talked about changing pretty quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I think, but I think they shouldn't have a problem paying for the fields if their finances are in good shape. That's the other thing is it requires them to keep their finances in good shape. Again, they don't want us in their business. This agreement gets them, gets us out of their business. All they have to do is pay their bills and we give them a rebate. So, I don't know.
So, specific to your comment, you can't predict what a future town council's going to do and you can't control what a future town council can do. So you're talking about putting a system in place that, that you want to control into the future. You know, you can't do that. All you can do is say the here and now on that. So your argument doesn't hold water. None of these cost the town any extra money. Nothing at all. These are, these are monies that Parks and Rec has looked at and they've talked with the youth association about. They've approved, the town council has approved these. What this does do, if we allow them to use the credit, is it enhances the partnership between the youth association and the town. Instead of a bully club or somehow putting upon them to prove some point about something that happened in the past. As you pointed out, youth association is being run very well. Penalizing them because of some packadillo that happened in the past needs to just go out the window. We need to focus on now.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I would like a chance to speak. We're supposed to take turns up here. Look, we had long discussions about this and as each of you knows, this was not my favorite system for this, for some of the reasons you state and also for some others. But this is what we approved and now we're simply adding an addendum on to what we approved. I do think, I don't want us to get, it is great, sorry, let me reform this. It is great to get the youth association's input and rather than, in my opinion, rather than putting this back to 1 million, I would rather continue it if you really want to ask them. But I do think that just as we set rules for developers, we say, well, this is, this is what we need. In our town, $2 million coverage makes sense insurance-wise to our finance officer and I'm sure it's not going to hurt us if we go back to 1 million. But I do like the stand, since it's the standard for all other park events, I just wonder if someone else, if something did happen, might say, well, why did they not have to carry 2 million? I would rather be even-handed. So I would prefer to do that. I do see there's a difference between the way Guilford County is insured and the way we're insured. But I do think we need to either move forward with this as it is because this is the system that we landed on. And if it's not perfect, we're going to find that out over the next year.
Well, I'm not going to support the increase in insurance because we just gave it to them a week ago, week and a half. That's just not enough time. In my opinion, I'm not.
Okay, like I said, I, there is support to remove, move back to a million for now. Other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the updated field uses policy and addendum with the following revisions. One, to remove the $2 million insurance requirement and change it to the 1 million that has been discussed. And two, to allow Oak Ridge Youth Association to use the rebate funding approved by Parks and Rec and the town council as a credit against monthly charges.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stone, any further discussion?
I think we've discussed.
Mr. Greason? Ms. Snyder? I'm sorry, Mr. Greason, I'm sorry.
I'm torn between this because I was on the committee. Me and Jim, we're going to have a quick turnaround on moving money around. So that's the only reason I'd like for Jim to be here when we vote on this.
We do need to do something because there's some outstanding invoices at the moment that if we don't do something, we're not going to be able to pay them. They've already done their July and they're entitled to the rebate. If we put this in place, because there was a camp. So right now, so.
Can we put it in place for 30 days? Or until the next meeting? Is that possible?
That's a question maybe to.
The question is, is it possible to delay this for 30 days?
Put it in place for 30 days.
30 days in place so they can get their rebates for, come up at the next meeting when Jim Harton's here and we can all.
Yeah.
Well, I guess what we can actually do is just, just maybe put in place the adjustment for camps.
Comment? Please have all the comments.
So my preference would be, based on what I'm hearing here, I'd rather just go ahead and vote on it tonight. If it fails 2 to 2, then we can bring it up next week. If it passes, then it passes.
Well, I mean, we've got to do something about the.
All right, okay.
Well, and.
All right, you guys have had a chance. Let's rotate it around, then we come back if you want.
Again, I don't think we should be rehashing the basics of this agreement. So I can't vote for that. Not because I'm not interested in possibly rethinking this, but speaking of having, we did tell the youth association that we are moving forward in a certain way and to now change it midstream, I don't think that makes us look good because this is, it may not be my favorite way, but it is a reasonable way to move forward.
What are we really changing though? I mean, other than a quick turnaround payment?
Right.
I mean, and I think Jim Harton was on board with that. You were in some of the meetings, right, Bill? I mean, I'm not going to speak for him.
Okay, well, okay then. Well, right now, there is a motion on the table. It's been properly made and second. Unless it wants to be withdrawn, it has to be called. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, the motion fails. I will make another motion then. I will make a motion that we approve the addendum with the following change, that the insurance is reduced from 2 million down to 1 million and the rest of it stays as is. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussions have been made. If anyone else wants to comment, fine. But if not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. So what I would suggest though is we at least pass something so that we can pay for the camp, which is the For O R Y sponsored sports camp outside of the regular session. Each event will be eligible for a rebate in the amount of $5 per Oak Ridge resident, not to exceed actual expenses. I would suggest that we make that, at least allow that to go forward so that we can pay them the rebate. They've, they've done it and they provided us the rosters.
If that's a motion, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. So at least we can pay them for their August, for the, is that enough?
Yeah, rebate. Yes, I mean, I will note that as monthly invoices are sent out by the town, they'll be payable, Oak Ridge Youth Association will need to pay on those invoices in the way that the policy is currently written is that we don't rebate until the end of the year. So we can't issue monthly rebates unless council approves a policy. The addendum that allows us to issue rebates monthly.
Well, how are we paying for it before?
We'd be paying at the end of the year.
The old policy.
We'd be paying at the end of the year.
How about if a friendly amendment that we, I'm sorry, now I'm getting confused. Approve the camp payment for 30 days and reconsider, why don't, what about the idea? I thought it isn't a bad idea that was proposed that we approve this entire agreement for 30 days, which I don't like because that's bad policy, but it would get us out of this quagmire tonight.
That's fine. We, I think so. So approve it for 30 days?
You willing to withdraw your motion?
Yep.
Okay, so I move that we approve this policy.
Well, it's already been voted on, but.
Oh.
Right, voted on and approved. So what's being proposed now?
We're going to propose that we put the entire policy in place for 30 days and then when we have full council back, we would decide.
Well, it was approved, but we didn't have a majority.
Right. Well, no, actually, well, the one piece was approved.
Oh, the one piece. So in addition to approving that one piece, I would like to approve the rest of it for 30 days. How's that?
I'll, is that, can we do that? Second it? I'll second it.
I don't see how that's different from what was voted on before. And I would think Mayor Protem Stone would have to make, effectively have to make this because.
Did we put a 30-day thing on the first one?
Be counter to.
No, it was.
We didn't put a 30-day.
There weren't 30-day limits on any of the other motions.
I understand that. I understand that.
So it's a different motion and we can vote on it.
With the 30-day limitation, durational limit.
Right.
Well, obviously you can do that. So, all right.
Yeah, it's not good policy, but we can do it.
All right.
I'm all for it.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration approval Heritage Farm Park Phase 2 Master Plan Concept and Design.
I'm going to present Jim Ford's from McGill's presentation that he made to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We've spoken about this and he, I have reviewed this presentation with him. He apologizes he can't be here tonight. The presentation, here's just a summary of the presentation. A few introductions. We hired McGill Associates to do a public input meeting as well as to conduct a survey for the development of Phase 2 of Heritage Farm Park. We'll go over the results of the public input meeting as well as the survey and discuss the proposed conceptual layout and the opinion of probable A public input drop-in meeting was held on July 12th during a music in the park event. We had approximately 56 participants who stopped by the tent there to take a look at the visual preference survey and the map of Heritage Farm Park and to give their input to McGill. Here's an example of the visual preference survey that was presented during that drop-in session. There are 16 different types of amenities that were presented and participants were asked to rank or state their preference for what sorts of amenities they'd like to see as part of Phase 2 at Heritage Farm Park. We also shared the community survey, both the actual survey and also they handed out those cards with a QR code that would direct folks to a virtual version of the survey. From that visual preference survey at the drop-in session, what you see on the screen there are the number of votes that each of those amenities received. Pickleball got the most votes from the folks that stopped by the tent. Water play was not, not exactly, what was shown was not really a traditional splash pad, although that was mentioned later. This was more like a, just a water feature that you can kind of splash around in, but doesn't really, not really a typical splash pad. A dog park, interestingly enough, we already have one, but that, that came in third. Sand volleyball and fitness trail stations were also popular items. And our consultant pointed out that, you know, when you do these types of surveys in the middle of July, the water features always get a lot of, obviously folks are hot and they'd love, what they'd like to see at the moment is something that appeals to them. And so that makes a lot of sense. But there could be a bit of a bias in giving a survey in the middle of July for things that are going to cool people On the actual community survey, which was live from June 25th until August 6th, which is a total of six weeks, we received 831 results from different households, which represents 1,785 individuals. Here, you get a sense of who responded. Most folks were within the town of Oak Ridge, which is good. That's who we primarily wanted to hear from. And a good number of folks that have been in town for more than 10 years. And they were asked what activities they currently participate in at Heritage Farm Park and walking, no surprise, was, that's really the primary activity at the park right now. Received a lot of, a lot of votes. The playground, running, playing sports, et cetera, all received a certain amount. Our consultant felt the following questions were important, especially as we consider applying for grants, making sure that we are an accessible park and that we're providing features that are accessible to those that might not be, that have more difficulty in accessing amenities. Most people felt at a rate of 92% that the paths and park elements are very accessible, which is good. That is certainly what our goal is. But again, there are some folks that felt that we could make improvements in accessibility. We also asked a question about how important it is for protecting the environment in ways such as using native plants, reducing water use, et cetera. Nearly half of the respondents felt that that was very important. And you can see, you know, 95% felt that it was at least somewhat important. And these are the types of things that regardless of the community support for it, always are, score well in terms of making grant applications for state and federal dollars. Native plant landscaping, these are the types of things we do, we try to do anyway, came in as the most, what folks felt was the most important environmentally friendly component to add to the park. We asked, and we really wanted to tailor this question toward the elements that had been originally part of the Heritage Farm Park design plan. So we asked folks if they played pickleball or basketball or tennis. And you can see the response rate there for pickleball is about 50%. And basketball, I think, came in right around 25% or so and tennis, a little bit below that. There were write-in options as well and you can see that on the right-hand side. Those were types of amenities that for the most part, either we already have or weren't, that we didn't request specific input on. We also asked if it would be appropriate to accommodate tournaments for any of the sports courts that we would be proposing. And that was a fairly even response rate. 43% did feel that yes, it would be appropriate to accommodate tournaments. And then you can see there on the right, by specific sport. So, you know, 30, 31% or 96 responses came back that, yeah, they, they think that when we think about providing pickleball courts, to do it in a way that would accommodate tournaments. And here is a, here's a more detailed question in terms of asking folks whether their interest is high, moderate, low, or no interest as it relates to very specific amenities at Phase 2. And again, you noted a theme here that pickleball courts is coming in higher than just about anything else. So 405 responses expressed high interest in pickleball courts. Adventure play ended up as number two. And later in the presentation, you'll see some examples of what, what that looks like. Basketball courts came in at number three with 191 responses. Outdoor fitness stations and so on down the line. Tennis courts were number seven on the list with. Tennis courts were number seven on the list with 20% of respondents who felt that they had high interest in that. There were write-in mentions, and here's where we saw the splash pad and playground with 58 write-in responses. It is difficult to know how much, how many more responses we would have gotten for that had it been an actual question, one of the options that folks could choose. All we have is the data on having it as a write-in, as a write-in mention. And you can move on to the, to the next slide. So here's the, the concept plan based on the input that McGill received during the session at Music in the Park and the survey, and then the stakeholder meetings that were held individually and in pairs with town council members and staff. And what you'll see is remarkably similar to what our original master plan for the property showed. More detail, however, on the sports court area, specifically the pickleball and tennis court areas. So you can see where we had originally graded that pad for six tennis courts. The mix that has been proposed are two tennis courts on the far side of the pad, and then eight pickleball courts that are on the side of the pad that's closest to the picnic shelter and playground. And then you can see kind of in between the court areas what they have proposed as shade structures. And what, and a lot of the input that council has received during public comments over the last year or two has noted how much of a social event pickleball courts can be, and how important it is to have areas for people to congregate, whether they're waiting to play or whether they're just socializing. Having those areas that are shaded are something that our consultant highly recommended as an amenity that would be appreciated and would add to the experience of coming to the pickleball courts at Heritage Farm Park. You can also see in dark gray some new proposed sidewalk, and the one at the bottom of the screen was in response to several comments we've received about access to the back field, multipurpose field. Currently, you have to walk through the front field to get to the back, so we've proposed a concrete sidewalk to bypass that front field to go directly to the rear field. And the other element that we feel is really important is additional parking. Our parking lot, existing parking lot, gets filled up just with walkers and folks coming to the playground on a nice day. So it was evident to McGill, I think it was evident to the Parks and Rec Board, it was evident to everyone that anything that was proposed in addition to what's already at Heritage Farm Park was going to need some extra parking. And the idea here was, obviously, you want to keep it relatively close to the new amenities, so there's a reasonably flat area, although it will require some grading as you come in off Skoggins, that we could accommodate 49 additional parking spaces and then a walkway up to the existing pathway. And the last feature is the proposed fitness stations, and they're sort of around the back side of the path as you're rounding the sports courts area. Here are some images. I think everybody knows what all these are, what is a good sort of representative image of pickleball, so you get an idea of the size of those courts. And here are some examples of the shade structures. So the tensile shade structure, those are fabric structures, and what you see there is essentially what McGill has proposed as an idea. They can also be, they can also be hardtop, like the one that's shown on the right, and that's a cantilevered version of the shade structure. Any of these types of installations would be appropriate for, for the pickleball court area. Here are some examples of the adventure playground. And this is, so our existing playground, this would be a more expensive type of installation than the existing playground that we have. There, this is very, trends are in the direction of providing this type of playground. As you can see, there, I mean, I would certainly, if I was nine years old, I would have a blast on something like this. But you can see how they're sort of set in the trees, that's real important for this design. There's no real appropriate place in the Phase Two area for this type of playground. However, you'll see later, on a later slide, as a future, potential future phase, a site's been identified that could accommodate this type of playground. And here's just kind of an overall map of Heritage Farm Park and the activity areas. So the area in green is what the consultant identified as a potential Phase Three, and that's the adventure play area that's located in the trees closer you get to Oak Ridge Road. And what, the real advantage there is that it ties into some of the neighborhoods that would have walkability to that location. And it's, it's in the trees, which is great in terms of accommodating the design. And then some of the other features that have been important to council since we began thinking about how to design Heritage Farm Park, and that's the view shed buffer along 150, keeping the open space agricultural and a natural sort of meadow look, which looks wonderfully bucolic now with the hay bales. Beautiful to see from 150 and from the pathways. And then you see the open space and existing drain field. This is a wet area, it's also where our septic area is. And so there had been consideration in putting some of the sports courts in that part of the park. In terms of, of the natural features there, I think it proposed more difficulties, and that's why McGill has proposed the sports courts to be where they had originally been slated, which is up toward the top of the map there. And the last two slides are the opinion of probable cost. And Jim Ford has a rounded number there, it's actually a little bit less than 1.8. On the next slide, you can see it broken down. And, and again, I really would stress that these numbers are the best guess that McGill has based on other projects that they have managed. These prices are highly variable, depending on the environment, the bidding environment, the number of contractors. There are all sorts of variables that go into this. This is intended to give council a planning tool in terms of programming, future investments, just to give a ballpark of what it could cost to construct all of these elements. And this, this list is exhaustive, so it doesn't leave anything out. Court lighting, for instance, is included. Also, the concrete for new sidewalks, landscaping, stormwater and erosion control, et cetera, and then also the design and survey estimated costs. And again, I would remind council that we don't know what it's going to cost until the bids come in. But again, this is a planning tool meant to help make those decisions. And I believe, that's, that's the last slide. I would respectfully ask council, I spoke with the chair of the, co-chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, since Jim Ford was not able to be here, I hope that Parks and Rec Advisory Board Chair could also make some comments on the proposal.
Sure.
Adrian Ecker, 5679 Timmer Trace Way, Oak Ridge, co-chair of Parks and Rec. I don't think that was picking up, sorry. Happy to answer any questions. Couple call-outs I just wanted to make. After the presentation, we had a lot of discussion, of course, with the Parks and Rec Board. Couple call-outs in order for a Part F grant. You have to have three new elements, so that was important to us, that we made sure we maintained that, so that stayed as a viable option. We discussed, you know, many of the items, a couple changes that we had from the presentation have already been represented here. We had some planning as far as, we know parking is definitely a big piece. So with the parking, we would envision the need for actually more than what this has. A Phase Three would enable the parking to continue further out, so that was part of the reasoning for the design. There was some talk, of course, with the splash pad and water feature as well. We talked quite a bit about that. There is several reasons why that doesn't show up here. Honestly, the adventure play had more comments on that as the write-in. We also felt that that fit the town's, you know, atmosphere a little better and the character of the town, particularly how that can play right into some of the wood area. We did talk with that, just for your information. The splash pad slash water feature can have a lot of variances. We think I have a traditional splash pad, which some of the larger cities have, would probably not fit well with Oak Ridge. Those type of systems run anywhere from, starting at about $200,000 to well over $1 million, was the quote from McGill for that. Drainway systems is one way to do it, which are the cheaper way. The recirculation systems are, what he advised are better, but they're also a lot more expensive, also without having municipal water at the moment. We didn't really feel that that was probably the best thing to try and put in the system right now, as well as knowing what a splash pad is going to draw a lot of people. Looking at the existing splash pads, or people are driving 30 minutes to them because they are very, you know, attention-getters for crowds to come in from all around, and we really didn't feel that we'd have the support of parking if that was a feature that was bringing in people from all over. We talked about the staffing needs. From what Brock was suggesting from this, after listening to the presentation, there really wasn't much thought that they would need additional staff. Brock suggested possibly one more person might be needed was his recommendation as far as additional staffing. We looked at what kind of recurring costs might be associated with this, mostly with the sports courts. And as far as also the shade structures, those are looking at more of a 10-year plan, so we don't have the pricing of that. But needing to have some resurfacing or repainting done, probably on about a 10-year basis was also what we determined. I think those are my immediate call-outs, but happy to try and answer any questions as well.
The courts, are they based on concrete or asphalt?
That's a great question. So this, there we had some public comments and recommendations as far as the, what the pickleball courts are made of. This estimation has the more premium ones, I'm not sure which that was, but it was, because they listed a couple different ones, and this was the recommendation from several individuals who are active in the pickleball community, was the one that they said you need to have. As well as was noted by multiples that you, in order for it to be successful, you have to have each court individually fenced, and these are, you know, low-level fences for the balls, so they don't go from one court to the other. So this quote does include that, which adds to the cost. But there are benches along it, there are fencing all around each of the individual pickleball courts. So we were, presented this in the more premium fashion. You certainly could lower the cost by changing some of those surfaces, but the comments we were having from the pickleball community was, those are very less desirable, and they kind of wish the areas that have that, they don't even go to play on. So we kind of felt there really wasn't much need for recommendation to recommend using a lower-cost surface that no one's going to be satisfied with. It'd be better to try and change, you know, find the funds to make a pickleball court that the community is going to enjoy.
So what is it? Is it asphalt or concrete, or is there something? I'm, I didn't get an answer that I was...
I apologize, I don't have in my notes which was the exact one. I know it was the, John and Todd were also in our meeting. Do you remember which exact one?
We asked that question, and we never got an answer out of McGill.
I believe it's a concrete base.
I believe, I believe you're right.
Concrete base, and then there's going to be a surface put on top of it.
Right. But apparently, it was, it was what the pickleball community, pickleball community advised us was the court of choice.
I have a question. I, I was there that night, and I recall, I think I recall, Jim Ford from McGill saying that another reason that water features like splash pads are difficult, it would be difficult in Oak Ridge, is because we're on septic, we don't have sewer. Is that not the case?
That is correct, yeah. And since we don't have a water system right now, the costs...
I mean, even with the water system, we don't have sewer.
Correct.
Is what he was saying.
And that's why he said the recirculation system would be the better way to go, but that is, that's the type of system that pushes you to a million dollars, and that's a million dollars for one single feature.
And one other question, I don't know if you know this or Bill does. It, it looks like on this plan that we received, that there are three shade structures, two in the middle of the courts and one next to it. Is that true? Because when we saw it before, it only had the one structure next to it.
Right, yeah. And Mike, can you go back to that, one of the slides that show the...
The layout?
The layout, yeah, a couple slides. Yep, that's good.
Yeah.
And I think that what the Parks and Rec Board didn't like about the original layout was that they didn't want a picnic shelter type of structure that could compete with private rentals and the sort of spread out separate ones we're preferring.
That's correct. We, we recommend it be moved where it is now to also give that separation from the existing playground, to try and space that out. Also, we would anticipate future growth of that shade structure moving further down. So that gives the pickleball players and spectators areas to congregate that start driving the crowd away from the playground.
And one final question. The AV equipment for sound attenuation, that's sort of white noise to help with mitigating the sound from the pickleball, from the courts for the accessible playground. Where would that be placed?
That would be placed, I'll have a pointer. If you're looking at the playground, that kind of kidney shape down towards this very bottom right pickleball court. We also discussed putting a water feature there. We were starting to get cost-conscious of the fact that this keeps going up and up. So we first kind of spoke of actually like a fountain or some type of water feature there to give you that sound barrier between that. We kind of presented the more cost-effective option of doing it with auditory speakers, but in place of that, you could go with a more costly method, but putting an actual fountain or water feature there. But that's, that's where it's focused. This sidewalk, the new sidewalk, the stretch that's coming down this way, parallel to the pickleball courts, that's where the sound feature would be to mitigate the pickleball sound to the recreation area.
Thank you.
And during the meeting, we, you guys had a really good meeting, by the way, a lot of great questions. But during that meeting, one of the mitigating things that we could do at no cost is just move the tennis courts to the right, move the pickleball to the left, so that there is that distance buffer. And I believe that McGill was suggesting that, you know, plantings and such would do, some barn would do the noise stuff. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are, are thinking through, but there is a cost factor involved here.
Exactly.
So...
And I will, I, we talked to Jim Ford about switching the, flipping the pickleball and tennis. His response was, he said he thought about that for a long time, but he felt like the noise difference in, you know, moving it 15 or 20 feet probably wouldn't be that significant. And then you're in a situation where the primary, the more folks are going to be going to the pickleball court, so you'd have more people walking through the tennis court area to get to the pickleball area. And it would make congreg, identifying areas for people to congregate just more difficult. He felt that having the tennis courts a little bit further away, since it was at less intensive use and people would be less likely to be congregating there, just from a flow perspective, it made a lot more sense to keep pickleball on that side of the pad.
And the other thing that was brought up by somebody at Parks and Rec, which I totally agree with, we put noise makers in that playground.
Correct. Yes. Quite a lot of them.
We're not asking the fire department to not turn their sirens on until they get to 150.
One other call-out that I had in my notes that I didn't mention, that I wanted to bring up, is just as a reminder, where you see these sports courts, it's just paint on concrete. So it can be changed, it can be reconfigured. You know, right now, we, we kind of felt not doing the tennis as a multi-use, you know, but that certainly could be added later, they could be converted. There is some feedback from both tennis and pickleball about not enjoying multi-use because of the extra lines and the need for different netting, and there's different heights between the nets of a tennis and pickleball court. So we felt it important to present to the town a dedicated pickleball solution, a dedicated tennis solution. But these are all easily configurable as we, as the town grows. If this is developed, we see that there's a need for more pickleball and less tennis, maybe we, you know, we re-line and now it's one tennis court, more pickleball, or any configuration that needs to be made. So it's just important to keep note that, once you have that pad up, it's just, you know, you know, paint on the concrete.
Okay.
Jim Ford said that eight courts would be a good starting.
You can come up to the microphone.
Jim, John Browning, 824 L. Road. Jim Ford recommended eight courts. He said you could have a tournament with that few courts, and again, we could probably use 20 courts, but he said eight would be a good start, numbers-wise, on the pickleball.
And we try to be very conscious with how many we put in versus what kind of parking, because we know parking is definitely going to become an issue, and honestly, it needs more parking than we have here.
Well, I mean, that's, that's something I've been talking about recently, is I, I do believe separately from this, we need to put together either a study group or hire a consultant to look at our global parking issue across all parks.
For sure.
Because I think we need to have some kind of global solution to the parking. That's definitely something I think we need to look at, not, not, not on this one, but definitely, because like you said, the thing, the, one concern I have about tournaments is that with tournaments, I mean, I realize that's not the primary reason for these, the primary reason is for local residents, but if we're going to have tournaments from time to time, have we really taken into consideration the people that are waiting to play? You know, because there's going to be teams that are coming in and out and things like that. So I have a little concern about that. Is there sufficient gathering space? And also, is there sufficient watching space? Because if you're going to have a tournament, you're going to want to watch it. And I would anticipate that at some point, the youth association may decide to offer pickleball as a sport, and in that, that's another case where parents are going to want to watch. So I don't see a lot of ability for people to watch. So that's one of my concerns. So I, I would say that maybe when we put it out for bid and design, that they maybe take that into consideration and see what, what accommodation they might be able to make to allow a little bit more audience, audience capability. I think, I do believe the noise attenuation is important. There's, there are conflicting things in the existing park, but I think it's just empathetic to say, look, what can we do to make a child who has challenges in the world, a little, little, little bit of a safer little area? They do have to deal with all this stuff everywhere else, so why not make this a little more of a safer space for them? So I definitely would be very much in favor of some sort of attenuating or shielding or something like that. The only other thing, what was the other thing? So I mean, those are my concerns. Otherwise, I think it's a great plan. I just, like I said, I have my concerns about, have we allowed enough space for the people that are going to be either waiting or watching? And like I said, if we're thinking that, if this is as popular as everybody says it is, I can, I, I got to imagine the youth association at some point is going to say, hey, let's have a pickleball program, and right now, there's almost no place for the parents to watch. So that's, 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 that's one thing. And to be honest, that's something that I only thought about like a little bit ago, otherwise I would have definitely raised it many days ago. It was just something that occurred to me within the last day, I think, you know, that there is not enough space for people to watch, that kind of thing. So that would be one thing I would look at. Otherwise, good plan, so. Other questions, comments, observations? What I think we now need to do is consider that we're, we're, we're proposing that we put this out for a request for quote, is that correct?
For the design?
For the design. So basically, we would be asking companies to come back and say, this is what we propose it's going to cost to put together a design. One of the things we need to undertake, one thing we possibly want to consider is, the company that would do this would be a similar company that would be able to handle sidewalks.
Handle what?
We, the same, the company that would tend to handle this design would probably be able to handle sidewalks too, from a design standpoint. So one of the suggestions staff had was that we might want to try to present this to the design companies, so that they would bid both the design for this and the design for sidewalks, and then at some point, we might be able to get some economies of scale from a design standpoint. Because right now, there is no budget for the design for this. There is a budget for the sidewalks. Now, we can change that very easily, but it was a suggestion from staff that similar companies are probably going to propose, would be bidding on both things, so we might want to consider at least making it so that staff has the flexibility to say, hey, would you also design our sidewalk for us? And, and see if it would give us some economies of scale. Since we have budgeted to do the sidewalks this year, so that's something we're planning to do already. So if we were to tag this together, we may, may get a little bit of scale. I don't know if Bill wants to add a little more detail to that idea.
And, and we talked about this a little bit a few days ago. Another option could be to simply release separate RFQs for sidewalk design and for the design of Phase Two, and they'd all be going to the same community of civil engineers, essentially. So we, we might get, we would likely get responses on both projects from the same firms. So if we select the same firm to do both projects, that's, it also could be a situation where when we get to a negotiation on fees, we can say, you know, you're, you're, we're looking at awarding both contracts to, to one firm, how can you provide an economy of scale to do both projects?
And like I said, we're not obligated to take anything when it comes back. We can not accept anything, so it's not like we're obligating ourselves to do anything. But I just think that it may be the ability to get a little bit of economies of scale that might be available.
So you're suggesting we take the, what is it, half a million dollars in CIP for sidewalks and use them here?
No, 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 no. We only have money in the budget for design.
I understand.
And what do we have budgeted for design? Can you remind me?
We have $50,000 for design for sidewalks. So we're only talking about design money right now. We're not talking about build money.
Stand there.
So we're only asking, say, hey, how much would it cost you to design this?
Do we have any money budgeted to design Phase Two of the park?
No.
I don't think we do, right?
No, we don't.
So where would we draw that money from? You mean, we'd use the sidewalk design money?
No.
Well, you, you wouldn't have to, certainly. You'd simply do a budget amendment to accommodate whatever the fee from a design firm for Phase Two would be.
Well, we don't know what it's going to cost to design, so we're just going to be putting it out for a request for quote. They're going to go back and say, it's going to cost you X to do this design. And at that point, we have to decide, are we going to accept that bid? And then we'd have to do a budget amendment.
Well, and as a reminder, this is a slightly different process. It's a request for qualifications.
Oh, okay.
And then the process is that council will select the most qualified firm, and then at that point, you negotiate the fee.
Okay. Can we consider design-build? They still have to hire an architect to prove, offer a civil engineer to sign off on the project and make sure the drainage and all that stuff's done.
But design-build, we have to set the, how much money we're going to spend.
The, the design-build is an option. It's very, it's more complex than the typical design-bid-build. There are...
It saves money.
I, I would, if, if that's something the council would like to consider, I would ask to have time to thoroughly research that process. The state statutes don't make it easy, and local governments are not, it's, it's not a process that's used often. And so it's a process that I'm not familiar with, and I'd certainly want to sit down with, with Michael to, to learn more about it and present a recommendation on that.
But if we were going to put it out for design-build, wouldn't we have to have the money for the whole project?
Yes, because it would be one contract to do the design and build, that's correct.
Decide ahead of time how much money we're going to spend.
Well, how are we going to get that money? Can we direct finance committee to look into this to see? Can we even afford it?
Well, what I'm saying is, we're only asking for a design which will help us determine what it's really going to cost. All we're asking for right now is, is a design. We're not asking, we're not saying we're going to build it. And until we have the design, we can't decide if we have the money.
So in other words, and we've seen this before, but I just want to clarify this, mostly for people who are here, by getting it designed, we get more into the weeds. The designer would get more into the weeds on the costs, and we would get something more accurate than this probable opinion of cost, which is sort of drawn from experience, like how much does this element typically cost? And so the, there can be quite a variation between those. But even that would be a moment-in-time estimate.
And at that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We can't direct our finance committee and the finance director to see, could we borrow $2 million at this point?
What I'm saying is, we don't know what we have...
Or answer that question, I'm sorry.
We cannot do it.
We, we, but what I'm saying, we don't have enough information to say, hey, finance committee, can you come up with X amount of dollars? Because we don't have a design yet. Until we have a design, we really don't have a good handle on what it's going to cost.
What, so what's this if that's not a design?
That's a concept.
Okay.
We don't have elevations, we don't have how much concrete's involved, that kind of stuff.
Okay. So we have a design here, and we don't need elevations because we know that it's flat. You know, that's already been brought up. We, this has been compacted, it's graded, everything else. So we have a design.
You gotta get rid of stormwater, you know, some of that stuff.
Right, but, but that goes back to the design-build. What's it going to take to move this forward? We've, we've talked about it for 19 years, what's it going to take?
Well, the next step is to get a full design, and that's what we're talking about, is that we want to go out and find firms that can do this, and then the firm's going to say, this is how much it's going to cost to put the design together. Then we say, yep, you can do that. They're going to come back with a full set of architectural, civil engineering designs of how much concrete you need, where your drains need to be, where your parking lot goes, all that kind of stuff, so that we have plans that we can give to a builder and say, well, here, build it. But until we have that design, we don't have much to go on.
Right, and I just want to, oh, go ahead, sorry. There's a big difference between the kind of rough grading that's basically flat that we did as part of Phase One, and the kind of detailed grading and elevations, yes, and stormwater and erosion control, is this not correct, Bill? That would be a, and, and there's a lot, like the parking lot, none of that's been done for the parking lot area, but certainly even for...
There's going to have to be drains inside the, and the courts even.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. It hasn't been done for the pickleball and tennis courts, except at a very rough level. So as I understand it, you would have to get a detailed design with engineering and full plans, and then the next step for this, for the council would be to figure out where we're going to get the money. And we currently have a $2 million loan outstanding, and we have been informed, and I know this for a fact, that the local government commission has to approve any additional loans, and we've been informed that that would be pretty unlikely, given, like, you know, if you say it was 2 million, and you want to borrow another 2 million, well, that's more than our entire operating budget. That would never be approved by the LGC.
We'd have had a competitive bids in the past, we would have probably had the whole park with, Bill.
Like I said, what we're at right now is, the next step is to authorize staff to go out for RFQ, request for qualifications.
I think that is probably the, the cleanest and fastest method. Design-build in like the private world is one thing. It's more difficult, and there's more strings and procedures to follow in local government to do design-build. It's just a more complicated process. I think it's designed to ideally be faster, but it's a process that has much uncertainty in it, and I think that, to Jim's point, to the mayor's point about not knowing how much it costs and not knowing what the budget is, you're simply going to be in an environment where change orders and potentially significant change orders would be a part of the process of moving through the design-build. We're familiar with the design, then bid, and then build to a separate contractor. I, I think that's, at the end of the day, I think that's going to be faster and more cost-effective.
If there's no more discussion, is there a motion to authorize, or a motion? Go ahead.
So how long is this, if we do design, how long before we move to the next phase? What, what's this look like? A year?
If council authorizes to put an RFQ together, we can have an RFQ advertised in, in two weeks. And then a proposed, proposals from engineering firms in front of council in two months, six months to do the design, and then bid it out. I mean, that's a, a potential timeline.
I hope we can use some local architects, engineers around here that's not 100 miles away, 150.
And that's all entirely up to council when the proposals are reviewed.
Somebody can get here in a half an hour if we've got a problem.
Because this also puts it in good position to apply for a Part F grant, which could be several hundred thousand dollars, several hundred thousand dollars that taxpayers of Oak Ridge don't have to pay. So, you know, taking a little extra time makes sense.
Would we be able to, would we have enough time to get it into next year, in the March, same time that we're going to apply for the other loan that we...
And the Part F application?
Maybe this as well, yeah.
I, I mean, any, if we have the resources, yeah, I mean, the, the concept plan that we have is enough to apply for Part F, because Part F can include design costs as part of what's reimbursable. So we could apply with the information that we have now. Now, we still have to go through all of the checklist items, like holding the, getting community support letters, making presentations at, you know, the Lions Club and the Kiwanis and those sorts of very time-consuming processes. It's all about resources. I mean, if this is the priority of council, we can do it, but in terms of the resources that we have working on other projects, it's...
I have a question about that, though. Part F is a reimbursable grant, right? So you can't really, it would not behoove us to apply for it if we didn't have the funding in hand for the entire project. So we would have to figure out where that funding is coming from, because currently it, it isn't in our capital improvement budget until 2030 or after.
I also think it's likely that if we apply for Part F in March, and they make announcements in August, a year from now, I'd be surprised if we were awarded a, a grant on the first pass, simply because we got a grant several years ago for the first phase. And I think a $500,000 grant is probably less likely.
I see.
So realistically, we might be looking at, at a percentage of that in, in two years.
So you're not suggesting we wait two years?
I'm, I'm suggesting if you want a Part F grant, that's probably the, the reality.
Moving at the speed of smell.
Where do you suggest we get that $10 million? I'm just curious. If, if we can't borrow it, I mean, where we going to get it from? Are you going to raise taxes?
I mean, the only way we could move quickly is raise taxes. I don't think anybody wants to do that here.
I think, I think the main...
Yeah, the main goal right now, I think, is to get it shovel-ready, so that when it's shovel-ready, we can then go into a, a more detailed discussion, like, can we, can we afford it? You know, is it possible at that point, maybe, that we could potentially borrow money? Maybe. I know there's some hurdles. But also, you know, so I think it's, I think the main thing is, we need more information. We can't just shoot from the hip. And I think that's what we would do if we don't go through the full process of getting a, a well-laid-out design that's shovel-ready, and then when it's shovel-ready, there's other grants we can apply for. Or we can step up and say, hey, how do we rearrange our money so we can do it? But I think until we have a complete design, these are just guesstimates. And you've beaten us up regularly because on the farmhouse, that it was estimated to be this, it was estimated to be this, it was estimated to be this. It wasn't until we actually put it out for bid, we actually... It wasn't until we actually put it out for bid, we actually knew how much it was going to cost.
Still don't know how much it's going to cost.
So, the same thing is, I'd make the same argument is, let's wait until we have a complete set of, of drawings, and we're able to say, this is exactly what we do. We can also look at those drawings and, and figure out, maybe there are some things we can drop off. But until we know what the total cost is, I don't know how we would, we'd make any kind of decision on where we're going to get the money, because we have no idea what it is. So, I, I, I think we just need to go through the steps of getting a design.
Well, right, and I think that speaks to one of our strengths as a town, is that we plan things very carefully. And by developing the design, we would have, as the mayor has said, more information. And I would say that, you know, this is what happens to projects. We had this in our 2024 CIP at $405,000, and we updated that in this year's CIP to $905,000. Then, in my first conversation with Jim Ford, he said, well, you know, just on the back of the envelope, he said, you know, 1.3 million. And now we get the full preliminary opinion of probable cost, and we're already at 1.8 million. This is, unfortunately, the inflationary effects that affected, you know, the Heritage Farm Park and the farmhouse are still at play in the construction and labor markets. And things aren't getting cheaper. And we were also told that, you know, obviously, we would like to move ahead with this right away. If you wait, it's going to cost more. That's a certainty. Now, we typically sock away $500,000 a year in our, from our, just conservative use of our budget monies. And although I think that's accounted for in our five-year capital improvement plan, so it's a pickle, but think, but more miraculous things have happened in, in the past.
I'm sorry, I laughed at your pickle.
Your pickle, the pickle, yeah, that's.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, I think we, I'm going, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm starting to repeat myself, so go ahead.
Thomas Soll says that there are no solutions, there are only trade offs. And we're talking about doing things the way this town did them in the past. We're going to have to do some trade offs here. Some things are going to have to come off, we're going to have to move some money around. But what we're talking about is, once again, moving at the speed of smell. The comment was made, if it's the priority of council, it's the priority of the citizens. We done, we paid for a survey that everybody's seen, and the citizens are the ones saying, we want this, and we're dragging our damn feet.
I think a lot of citizens would look at this and say, I want you to do your due diligence to make sure that what you put in is going to stand the test of time. That 10, 20 years from now, these courts are still going to be usable and in good shape. They put courts in over Burr Mill, and they're already talking about having to spend half a million dollars to fix them.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt, I apologize, but we've, that Burr Mill thing has been thrown out so many times, that I'm just going to go ahead and debunk it one more time. The Burr Mill tennis courts were de-commissioned almost 10 years ago. And then Greensboro said, pickleball is growing so fast that we've got to do something. And they hired Wayland to come out there and resurface the old tennis court so that they could immediately get pickleball going during the pandemic. And then, after they were able to get their feet under them, then they've gone back and done the resurface. They did that because they had the, the court-ready process there, and it was just a matter of resurfacing. So, to point to Burr Mill and say, well, they did it wrong, yep, we didn't do nothing. They didn't do it wrong, they, they used what they had to get the citizens what they had asked for. And as far as parking goes, Burr Mill's pickleball courts are a quarter of a mile from the parking area. And nobody seemed to mind that because they had pickleball courts. Do you play pickleball?
No, I do not, but I spoke to the commissioner that's in charge of the Burr Mill, of the Parks and Rec thing. They freely admitted that they rushed to get it done, but they also freely admitted that if they'd taken a little more time, they would have had courts that would last a lot longer. So, I understand, there's, there's all sorts of trade offs they did there. But I'm saying is, we don't need to make those trade offs. We can take a little extra time, do our due diligence, put these things in properly so that they last, so that they have the ability to grow if we need them and things like that. I think we're, we're now at the point, though, the next step is, we need a design.
Let's move on.
Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we instruct staff to put out an RFQ for the design of this, the plan that we reviewed tonight.
I'll second that. Ms. Snyder, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I, I, I think, again, it just makes sense. We do things the right way. When we, when we can rush, we will rush, but this isn't the time to rush. This is the time to get a good design done.
Mr. Greason?
I don't want to beat it to death anymore, let's move on.
Mr. Stone?
$900,000 for Reban would have already built this place.
I am simply not going to stand for this.
Ms. Snyder, let me finish, it's my turn, and you can have another turn.
Okay.
I, I, I understand. The, moving at its snail's pace, we're, we don't have hospitals, we don't have police, we don't have fire, we don't have a sink, sinkhole in the, in the street. We can take the time to make sure we do this right. And when the time comes, spend a lot more time than we spent on the farmhouse, making sure the citizens are okay with us spending 1.5 million dollars, 1.2 millions, 1.9 million dollars. I think that's the biggest thing we need to be able to do, is confidently present to the residents, hey, guys, this is what it's going to cost to do this. Are you okay with it? And then we need to say, if you're okay with it, this is what we have to do from a, a standpoint of moving money around. And make sure the citizens say, yep, you're okay with that. But if we just rush this, we're not going, we're going to make the same mistake I felt was made with the farmhouse. We didn't spend enough time letting the residents have their input. The decision could have been the same, but I think if residents had a lot more time to give input on something, they can get comfortable with it, and they at least know what we're going to do. So, that's why I think we need to have a solid shovel-ready plan, where we can say, hey, this is what we think it's going to cost. And then we put it out for bid, they know it's going to cost that, and they know where the money's coming from. Because right now, I don't think anyone knows where the money's coming from. So, Ms. Snyder, you wanted to add something else?
Yeah, I, the figures that Mr. Stone keeps using, and that the mayor does not object to, but I do, because they're inaccurate, cover two projects. The Farmhouse Community Center was $650,000, offset by $380,000 in outside grants that saved our coffers from having to pay that money. Our restroom that we built at Heritage Farm Park cost over $500,000. It did not preserve a historic structure, nor did it provide a community meeting space unless you consider going to the bathroom that. Then there was a separate project, the Town Park Entrance Master Plan, for two and a half acres. And if you conflate it with the farmhouse, you get these crazy numbers of the per square foot. No, that was for two and a half acres of sidewalks and landscaping. And I, as someone running for office, and as a member of this town council, I always try to speak with honesty and integrity. So, I'm sorry, I was a little short with you. But we do this every single meeting. And I wish that the mayor would say, this is, you know, let's just set this aside, Mr. Stone. And if he would set it aside, I would set it aside, but I'm simply not going to stand for misinformation continuing to be shared.
As mayor, I hold no authority to tell a member of council what they can and cannot say. So, while I would encourage them to, as, as Mr. Stone pointed out with the youth association, we should let the past be the past. So, I would say, he might want to take his own advice and let the past be the past. But it's up to him whether or not he wants to do that. So, I do not have the authority to say what a member of council does or doesn't want to say. And I also am not going to get in the middle of, of arguing the numbers, because you can, you can present the numbers any way you like. But, like I said, that, that is where I am as far as that goes. So, if, if Mr. Stone wants to continue to bring something up, that's fine. If Ms. Snyder, if Ms. Snyder wants to keep it, I would suggest we move forward, though, on this.
I want to move forward tonight.
There is a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any other further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye.
Long enough.
All right.
We can turn a 30-minute meeting into two hours and a half.
I understand. Financial report.
Are you done yet, Sam? You make sure you put the timer on, Sam.
Put that three-minute timer on, Sam.
I could try to auction, but I can't guarantee it. Everyone should have got a copy of the financial, uh, finance officer's report and the financial statements last night. On the financials, um, under total assets, we've got 2.875 million, almost 2.876. That, you've got your normal report with the balance sheet. The detail with general fund and everything follows depository amounts at the banks on Schedule I. More detail on Schedule II with the breakdown of income and expenses by each fund. And the water equity fund, or water enterprise fund, excuse me, the debt schedule on Schedule IV. And then, excuse me, the water enterprise fund was last the assets were ahead. So, overall, everything's on the standard, as we've had each month, holding a strong position, we're paying all the bills. The main thing is the activity. We're seeing, again, strong collection activity from the county. We received ACH wire transfer remitting $758,000 from August. Property taxes, motor vehicle property taxes of $12,638, total of $770,784,08. This is all collections through August 31st. So, we're seeing the surge that we saw again last year. So, everything is really stable on that. For the month, we've had the sales tax and property tax, interest, planning and zoning fees, grant income, solid waste disposal tax, Veterans Honor Green donations, and park revenues. Investments, we're still monitoring, we're watching interest rates, supporting the staff, grant compliance through the month, we're continuing to support ARPA reports, the CIP process, and work on the water system. The main thing that we've been doing, actually this week, is the final audit field work. It commenced on Tuesday morning, we had the manager and two staff members on site, all three were there again yesterday, and senior staff was there today wrapping up some things. He came and visited Sandra, looked at inventory of our water meters, they've done all the fraud analysis and interviews, all the normal stuff that we do to have the quality audit. So, all of that is underway. Derek left about 5:45 this afternoon from my office. So, right now, the remainder of the work will be done basically remotely. We, I don't think they'll have to come back for anything. Overall, the last three days went really quite well. So, the other thing I had mentioned last month was the fire at Guilford Finance. They're still in temporary quarters, however, their systems are up, their employees are up, everything that we need is being processed in a very timely fashion. So, overall, all of that looks really well. As we move forward, we'll still be supporting the audit. And one of the key things that they did ask in the fraud interview was detailed questions and compliance about the ARPA and the other grants. And we, you know, we are in full compliance on all that, we've got all the records. In some cases, we're going to be storing some of those records for 11 years. But we've got everything looking good right now. So, mine overall, it's, situation is normal. Normal collections, normal audit, and we're just rolling right along.
Well, you mentioned the fire, they had, one of the things staff is working on is disaster recovery policy for our, our operations, so that if something did happen to this building, they'd be able to continue business with it very quickly, so. That's good. Thanks, any questions to Sam? Is there a motion to accept the finance officer's report?
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thanks, Sam, as always.
Thank you.
Committee reports, finance committee not reported, water advisory committee, any comments? Thanks for sticking it out.
Yeah, Spencer Sullivan, 7917, quiet place, Oak Ridge. Water Advisory Committee held its regular meeting on August 13th. You've already acted on two of the items from that meeting. We thank you for approving the text amendment and the expanded water fee schedule. With the construction of the tower underway and the contract for the water main awarded, the committee is focusing on the next steps to expand the municipal water system. Committee will be recommending that the town proceed with engineering the town core loop, that's the extension of the water main from the intersection of Linville Road and Oak Ridge Road east to Highway 68, south on 68 to the intersection with Linville Road, and then north on Linville back to that intersection. The committee's first priority will be to extend the line to 68 to serve Oak Ridge Commons. We should have a proposal ready for the council's consideration at your next meeting. We finalized our initial marketing plans. The marketing brochure will be mailed out to our citizens in the next few weeks. We've set two open house dates for Thursday, November 13th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m., and Saturday, January 10th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., for citizens to come and learn about our new water system and its advantages. The committee continues to work on a text amendment, reducing the number of lots in a subdivision that require a community well to be installed, and on alternatives to that requirement that were suggested by developers at our meeting two months ago. There are concerns that their suggestions may be in violation of state statutes. And so, we're working with the town attorney to resolve those issues prior to making a recommendation to council. As I said earlier, our goals are to build infrastructure and add customers as efficiently and cost effectively as possible. And community wells remain an important interim option in pursuing those goals. Any questions?
My question, I just want to make sure, if we go ahead with, down to the comments, that money will be funded out of the water money that we already got?
It's all, all out of the enterprise fund.
I just want to make sure, we don't have to borrow money?
Yeah, it, it would not impact the operating budget of the town at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, HPC?
I don't think they met.
Okay. Planning and zoning?
I think we covered their.
Board of adjustment did not meet. Mountains and sea? I know they're making a lot of progress, you know, so. Conservation easement committee?
They didn't meet.
Yeah, but they're still kind of waiting for property owners and things like that to do things.
Things in process.
Special events?
You going to need any extra time tonight, Patty?
You need extra time, Patty?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I don't think anybody wants any space. Anyway, Patty Dumchowsky, 7320, Hidden View Drive. Veterans Honor Green, construction, as Bill said, is complete on the boardwalk, and special thanks to Shannon Parker and Mark Reeves for doing such an amazing job on the boardwalk. We'll have a special opening for the boardwalk on, at the, our Veterans Day ceremony. We continue to take orders for pavers and hope to have a fourth group ordered before November. We need to have a minimum order of 20 pavers to send in an order. 9/11 ceremony, ceremony will be held on Thursday, September 11th, at the flagpole at the Oak Ridge Park at 10 a.m. We will place the blue spotlights under the flag and signage out this Sunday, where we'll remain in place for one week. Please stop by during the week if, if you're able to attend the ceremony. Veterans Day ceremony, again, will be November 11th at the Veterans Honor Green at 10 o'clock. Our guest speaker will be Christian Costelli. Heritage Day, the special events committee will have a booth at the event and have a muffin baking contest. Rules and entry forms are available on the website. Farmhouse, Farmhouse Open House, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has approved our request of having a table at the event and provide a handout on the committee's activities, and hopefully to promote some interest in volunteering. We'll also ask if there's any other committees that would like to share the table, to see if they can also get some interest on other volunteers. Light of the Night, we're gearing up for the Light of the Night activities, lots of things going on behind the scenes. We do have one, one extra at our last meeting, storytime at the farmhouse. One of our committee members suggested that we investigate providing quarterly storytime for the kids and enlist our retirees to participate if. for the kids and enlist our retirees to participate if interested. We'll look into organizing this and creating a schedule and create activities. Thank you, and any questions?
And actually, there's a resident, I forget her last name, but she's interested in possibly putting together some reading activities. So I'll get you the name.
Thank you. We thought it was a good idea.
Yeah. Okay. Where am I now? Tree Board, they did meet. Yes, John?
John Browning, 8024 Linville Road. The Tree Committee did meet this morning. We're finalizing our plans for Heritage Day, September 27th, Saturday, 10 to 4. All kinds of tree-related quizzes and door prizes, so we're looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Parks and Rec?
Adrian Eckernod, 5679 Timber Trace Way. The Parks and Rec met on August 21st, in person and on Zoom. The seasonal sports have started at the park. That includes the Heritage Farm Park Field Rentals. The Heritage Farm Park Warranty Work will begin this fall as well. The main callouts from that would be seeding, and there are four new trees that will be replaced. The Veterans Honor Green Phase Two, as I meant in my notes, is now complete. New park lights are being installed mid-September. August 1st, the tenants have moved into the new property on Linville Road. And for a farmhouse update, AC unit has been raised and drainage work has been completed. I believe they're still needing the parking lot corrections to be completed, though. Music in the Park for 2026 already has three new bands booked, and these are new bands that have never been to Oak Ridge. And without rehashing, we heard the presentation from McGill and, you know, had a discussion about that, and obviously that was presented to you tonight. Reminder of some upcoming events. Ridge Fest unfortunately was canceled tonight for the rain, but will be tomorrow and Saturday as well, with fireworks Saturday at 8:30 p.m. September 28th is still our tentative farmhouse, open house date. The open house is scheduled to be from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. with the first music on the lawn featuring Straight Shot to coincide with that from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And October 11th will wrap up our Music in the Park 2025, featuring Retro Vinyl, and that time change is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. for daylight savings time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a second public comment session, if you'd like to speak. Three minutes. State your name and address, and floor's yours.
Frank Carroll, 1389 Forsyth Road, Carner'sville. Just one thing, one thing that I would ask the council is, is if you look at, it sounds like the farmhouse is almost done. Wonderful. Has the council and the staff considered doing any kind of a lessons learned on how we got from the beginning of the farmhouse to where we are now? Why we got there? How we got there? And I think that that would be a useful exercise if you look at, you know, presented like a 1.7, 1.8 billion-dollar project at whatever it ends up coming at, how do you keep that project from getting into the same position as the farmhouse? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would speak? I think Adrian, you had your hand up, and then Lindsay in the back.
Adrian Eckernod, 5679 Timber Trace Way. Just had a recommendation for council. I certainly appreciate the lively debate, even though sometimes it can circle the drain. So I have no bones about myself sticking it out to the later evenings, and if I did, I shouldn't be running for town council. But with that said, our committees are made up of volunteers, and they often, you know, will have to sit through all evening. So I would have a recommendation for two reasons, to consider moving the agenda to having the committee reports, perhaps having them after the community organization reports. I think there'd be two benefits for that. One is allows the volunteer committees who spend their volunteer time to go ahead and present that to town council before the items that, you know, typically are going to take up the bulk of the council's time for that evening. The second part is, as you can see, the room's thinning out. That places it forward when a lot of people that are coming for other events can hear the committee reports, which I think would be more advantageous for the community. So when there's a lot of people here filling this room, I think it'd be great for them to hear about the committees, learn more about the committees, and help get more volunteers for the committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Lindsay Clark, 6816 Koala Drive in Oak Ridge. First, yeah, what Adrian just said, I actually do really agree with that because I feel bad as well with everyone kind of having to wait and sit here through that. That just makes sense, so great suggestion there. Secondly, I would like to address, because I brought up the splash pad earlier, I do appreciate the discussion that was had regarding the splash pad. One thing I would like to say, and this is, again, not for me selfishly, it's just, you know, I got the results of the park survey, and seeing that it was so highly rated, I just want to speak to those people that were pushing for a splash pad. I happen to agree, just having young children myself as well. Just wanted to kind of make that point. We spoke about the long-term planning and kind of taking time to plan things out. One thing I do want to suggest is that when we're talking about planning out the park, we have this set amount of acreage, you know, front and center in the town that we don't really get another opportunity to have that. So I hope that the council would kind of consider a long-term vision for that usage based on the survey results. So I know we say that, oh, you know, we can't do a splash pad, you can't do a splash pad, but it might be worth considering, hey, you know, is it worth looking into reserving a certain spot for that in the future? Should that be feasible? In which case, I think that adjacent to the playground would make sense. So when we're doing the design of the park, I would just ask you to consider that maybe there could be a little rearranging of the sport courts to have kind of an open space near the playground if that ever was an option in the future. Because, you know, we can't really rearrange once the sport courts are there. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would speak? Mr. Andrews?
Sam Andrews, 1829 Oak Ridge Road. Just two quick things. One, thank you for honoring Roger. Very, very special man. Not only with everything that he's done, but the people he influenced, as Mike talked about it. This coming Monday at 7:30 will mark 45 years since he held a junior fireman's class. Very near and dear to my heart because I was one of those. Roger held a variety of positions, doing a lot of things with the fire department. Several of us in that class, corporate officers now, fire commissioners, members of the Board of Directors. None of us had a clue that that would happen 45 years ago. He touched a lot of us, he trained a lot of us. And, you know, you saw Roger sitting here. My response with Roger, I will always remember him in turnout gear with a red helmet, teaching us, training us, and fighting fire leading from the front. Very influential man. And with that said, one other thing I'd like to tell you, Roger helped bring the department forward as an officer, as chairman of the board. If you were here around here on Thursday morning, you might have heard some sirens, you might have heard what sounded like a locomotive train coming down the road because there was train horns that went off. We took delivery on the new tanker, Tanker 51. They wanted to do it with a little pizzazz. The dealer parked it up here at Siku, got it ready, and then came down the road. So you're going to be seeing, the truck looks different. It's gray and red. It's the first change in color we've had since 87. The truck is not in the fleet yet. It is here. We are still mounting stuff on it. And once we get everything mounted and ready, then we have to train everyone to drive and operate. So it'll still be a few weeks before you actually see it running calls, but it is very distinguished with a different color, a different sound. And since it's over at Station 51, if you look careful, you will see Marvin the Martian riding on the back door and on both sides. He's the mascot over there. But it's a testimony to the people that came before that in my career, we've gone from repurposed, modified, home-built, military surplus trucks and the wonderful 54 that's still working to where we have modern, wonderful equipment. And that is also a legacy of Roger and all those that came before him. But we will have a proper, formal, where everybody can meet and greet on the truck once we get everything mounted and get the training done and get it ready to roll. We're going to have a public event. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wish to speak? If not, we will...
Hey, I'd like to point a privilege as a staff comment. I'd like to join everyone in remembering Roger Howerton as the great member of council and of this community that he was. And at 9:36 on this evening, I'd like to also remember that Roger Howerton continues to hold the record for presiding over the shortest meeting of the Oak Ridge Council, which in my memory was 19 minutes. Thank you, Roger.
Here, here.
We'll never have one of those. If there's no more public comment, we go to council comments. Mr. Greason?
You know, my only comment is, we're eight weeks away from the election. I encourage everybody to get out and vote, and I'm going to leave it at that tonight.
Mr. Stone?
Any town council member, whether they're running for reelection or not, any candidate that's running for town council, and any citizen can look at the cost for Redmond. It's over $950,000. It's not disputable. All monies are taxpayer money. There's two projects, fine, you want to call them two projects, but even past mayors have said, we wouldn't do the degree of the entrance if Redmond wasn't there. More sidewalks, more concrete that wouldn't be needed, that wouldn't be wanted except for the Redmond House. You can split them up if you want to, but we've spent actually over $960,000 on that corner, and costs are still coming. Please get out and vote.
Well done. Ms. Nader?
Well, I appreciate Adrian's good humor in calling our conversation lively, and I want to apologize especially to Mr. Stone, who just tried to needle me again. But still, I want to apologize for getting a little too lively. I'm a little emotional tonight. My son is getting married this weekend, and all I want to do is get out of this meeting, so I should try harder, I suppose. Mr. Carroll, I think the idea of a lessons learned is a great one, but I would like to encourage us to wait until the farmhouse has been able to open. Through no fault of our own, the contractor is a year late in finishing it. I think that once we see what over 95% of respondents on the first survey that we took for the Heritage Farm Park in 2000, I don't know what, 19 or 18 or something like that, wanted that house to be renovated for public use. And I'd like, and we had, I think, 80 people speak at different council meetings in favor of it, and many people contacted us, or that was a combined figure of people who contacted us. So lots of people in this community want that. I'd like to see how it works out. And like you, lessons learned are always important. So I'd just like to wait till we see how it works in the community because I think it's going to be a great, it's already a great addition to our park. Thank you.
Keep it short. As always, if you're able to donate blood, please do. I do want to iterate, if you're not registered to vote, please register to vote. If you are registered to vote, make sure you vote. We now are going to go into a closed session to discuss a matter that's within the attorney-client privilege by providing instructions to the town attorney about handling or settling claims, litigation, or other proceedings per NCGS number, 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 nurse. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.[1459.63]